Gonzalez.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
I didn't know if you were trying to put a little accent on there. Okay. Next on the agenda is letter. Hi. Mr. Batista, I don't know if you or Mr. Cruzal would like to address that for more.
I'm a little there. If you could discuss quickly Egyptian Trail. It's, I presented to the board, I believe it was April 9th, some issues after Superintendent Cruzal and I met with the engineering company that is currently working on the project. There were several issues that were brought to our attention, which I had mentioned, which is the geometry, our drainage issues, and then land acquisition, which we will have to engage in in the near future to make this project work. But the large, or the biggest problem issue that was presented to us at that time in that meeting was our drainage issue at Egyptian Trail in Manhattan Moni Road, and it was our runoff. The options that the engineering company presented to us was one, an underground basin, which would cost the village potentially millions of dollars, probably somewhere, I believe the estimate was around two and a half million to make that basin work. The other option was to run the water underground into the five acres that's on our southeast portion at De Bill Jones. That would be in prime real estate. It would take about approximately one acre of a detention pond for that runoff. And the other option which was explained to us was off the table would be to tap into Will County's line, which was, they thought it was a 24-inch line, we have since learned it's 21 inches. And the village has a 12-inch line, so we would have to first get permission from the county to tap into their line, and then we would have to make it fit, the configuration. Those were issues, but they also gave us a letter from Will County. In a letter dated January of 2014, from Will County to our engineering company. Will County is, pretty much, has more questions than answers from the engineering company, and they quoted IDOT regulations that were not presented in the engineering report to Will County, and basically said that we would not be allowed to tap into their line. It's presented several problems, seeing that we're now two and a half years into the project, and we have not even finished Phase One. So, we did ask another engineering company to take a look at what we had to this point, and ask them to review it and give us a better understanding of this Phase One, of where we're at. And after further review, it was towards the end of April, I believe, we received the review back, they also cited several issues. But mainly, the specs were not to IDOT regulation. So it's going to cause issues with the geometry. Wrong sizes were used, and again, they talked about our drainage issue. And the rainfall study that was provided to, in this project from our engineering company, had the wrong data. And so that report would not meet IDOT regulations. So with numerous issues, we then reached out to Will County, we met with Will County yesterday with the highway engineer, and met with his staff. And we addressed the letter that's dated from January, and there is some sunlight, I think, after all this gray news. We were provided an option that was not given to us from our engineering company, and that there is a possibility we may be able to ask for a variance to the stormwater committee, which we are now working in having Superintendent Cruzal to sit on the board, and that would, once we have our proper water survey reports completed by an engineering company, we can then take that to the stormwater committee and ask for a variance. And it has happened on two other occasions. Will County expressed to us, so there is a possibility we may be able to do that. So with that, I guess our proposal would be to the board to consider moving to an engineering company who is able to handle this project.
And that being somebody who is IDOT qualified, certified, what would be the terminology there that would apply to that?
It would be IDOT approved.
IDOT approved. And the one we had used to this point is not meeting their standards, is to simplify?
That is what we're being told, yes.
And not just being told that by a competing engineering firm, but others as well?
That is correct.
Can you put names to these firms that are in our mind?
I would recommend, Ms. Gonzalez, that we get a letter from the new engineering firm, an engagement letter, and then we can look at the terms set forth in the engagement letter. Because what we've been told, until we actually see it, I'd be careful with that.
Sure. And just to be clear, our goal is not to constantly be blaming previous whatever else, but it's to move forward, realizing that not everything has been done correctly in the past. The point is, without naming names specifically, anybody's been, would probably be able to pick up on it if they looked at the, who the previous Phase One was awarded to, and all of that, figure out all that out. But the point is, we're trying to move forward, so.
And now it's a.
Most of the data that's been presented to this point, it's fallen far short of what has been needed. Talking to Superintendent Cruzal the other day, it sounds like even if we get things moving forward today with a new firm to handle some of those, you're still talking about maybe even next year, it still may not see the project completed. Is that correct?
Yeah, the list is long, there is a long list. IDOT requires a five-year study, a two-year study was provided. A 40-year study looking at traffic volume report was completed. I take that back, a 40-year traffic study should have been completed, it was not. And in that 40-year study, that volume would tell us approximate traffic size and configuration that would be needed, whether or not we need signaling, where we would maneuver, how we would either put a curve or a T-intersection, and all these things were unanswered. And so we have a report that we're looking at with more questions than answers, and not much direction. So with that incomplete report, in the review, they just picked out the obvious ones. But obviously, our geometry, our sketches are incomplete, we don't have the answers. And the rainwater is a major issue, we have to address that.
You're picking up on something that was obviously started by somebody else, but were these in the scope of services as far as you can determine, that we asked for and paid for?
Oh, absolutely.
So what I'm hearing is that these were in the scope of services, they were not provided. We have since learned that IDOT is saying this company would not be licensed to work with IDOT? Are you going that far?
They're definitely not qualified to do Phase Two or Phase Three. Phase One, we were led to believe as a previous board that they were capable of handling Phase One. But the performance for the final product, two years, four months, after the bid was awarded, they were supposed to have had it done in 120 days, not two years. And what we found out that has been provided is woefully short, and not even to the correct standards, is what we're finding out from IDOT standards and whatever else. So most of what we have, we don't even know how useful, any of what we paid the $70,000 for is, we're not so sure how much of that is even relevant.
So you're asking for another quote from someone else to do Phase One? Did I hear, I thought I heard you say Phase One has not been done at this point?
Phase One is not completed yet, we're not able to come to, or to meet with the Federal Highway Administration and IDOT and sit with them and hand them a completed packet and survey of what we would be asking for.
So what you might be doing, if I'm hearing this correctly, is asking for a variance, which really isn't a good long-term solution, it's just a pass until we get the work done?
No, the variance has to do with stormwater, that's something, there's been a couple of times that have done that. It was Romeo and Bill and Lockwood, both have gotten variances.
Correct, the I-55 and Weber project and Arsenal Road at 55 as well, those were the two projects that were, they tapped in.
I'm in the opposite of this, when you say variance, so we're going to have stormwater, does that mean wherever goes? Where's the stormwater going to go?
The county, we cooperate with the county on the variance. So it wouldn't require the $2 million underground thing, it wouldn't require losing the prime real estate on the corner of Manhattan and Egyptian that we are.
I understand that, where's the water going to go?
It goes into Will County's line, and they gave us a routing of where we would tap in and.
So from our 12-inch line, it would go to their 24-inch line, how?
21.
21-inch line, so.
Correct, and it would have to be a configuration at their joint.
That's if they approve it.
If they approve it, they would give them a variance.
Okay, so they would give us a variance that would allow us to tie into their line with the smaller line? DJ, I see you waving your hand up.
Just to clarify, and I don't mean, Will County has strict guidelines as to tapping in. Our configuration looks like it's going to cross their line, and the concern is because we are increasing the diameter size, it cuts down on Will County's future potential for growth for additional lines. So what we would do is after re-engineering to make sure that the stormwater runoff calculations are correct, because there's a question of that too, that the size pipes that we're proposing to tap in, to run through, to get the stormwater drains to runoff, which ultimately, to answer your question, goes down to I-57 and then crosses through District One, which we are in, to Harlem, and contributes to the natural waters, you know, of the US type of situation. That variance, it's, you present your case and you hope for the best. And if we can get the variance showing that, you know, what we're trying to do, provide detention, whether, you know, we oversize our pipe to hold a little more volume, to control what needs to be released through Will County, is acceptable to them. Or if it's a situation where they say no, provide off-site detention, then we'll have to look into the options to provide off-site detention. Or as they indicated, Will County being indicated, that they've done certain things in their own private, to have to hold the water before it's released, because Will County themselves and their projects are even bound to the agreements that every municipality around the area has already signed to back in 90, and we know it was somewhere roughly right around there, I don't quote me on that, for the stormwater man, a good agreement. So we're bound by a strict set of guidelines as to what we can provide. And I'm not sure if any of you recall, the Culvers situation, when they went in, they had to provide off-site, they had to provide detention for their lot, and they opted to go with underground storm detention. So when you pull into Culvers Lot and go around into the drive-through or park out there, you're in essence parking around their storm structure, because they were mandated by a release rate that's through the county, they can't exceed it. So they opted to put, instead of having a detention pond in front, like the truck stop has, like, you know, multiple places have to provide that off-site detention to be able to release that at a controlled rate. They provided underground detention because of valuable real estate spacing and the confines that they withheld in. If we have to go with off-site detention, we have that lot there, is it an ideal situation? No. We have a Plan B, we worked that lot for Plan B to figure out. But there is sunlight based on having new calculations to be able to figure out if the stormwater that we are trying to release is the correct, stormwater runoff is correct for the ratio. And there's some questions to that because of the engineering that was done did not meet the IDOT requirement on the stormwater runoff. So really, to say, oh, we need a 21, we need, at this point, I really, I can't even say that that's the correct diameter that we're going to need for the stormwater. And that's, in essence, is jeopardizing the project in its entirety, that and amongst the other calculations.
Look, let me say this, and that is that in the past, I have not had a very high expectation for county to work with us, you know, based on the Culvers situation. But I was very pleased to hear that with a new engineering preliminary information being presented, Mr. Batista, Mr. Cruzal, both going out and meeting with Will County's highway commissioner?
Engineer.
Engineer. It was refreshing to hear that you have the right people with the right information, and also they're willing to work with us. And so I'm pleased that, you know, we're taking the right approach and getting better information so we can actually, so they don't treat us like, you don't know what you're talking about, why would we, you know, that kind of thing. So I'm very pleased with that, so.
To keep in mind, when this whole project started, Phase One is the responsibility of the municipality. We have not received any federal dollars to pay for this project thus far. So the more we pour into Phase One to get it ready to go, we will not start receiving funds for the project until we get to Phase Two. And in Phase One, we have to have all this figured out. We have not been presented as the board and the residents of intersection design studies, possible land acquisitions, the whole line yards, there's a big process that we have to follow. We're behind the e-ball, and we have to take action now, the road is deteriorating to where we're probably going to have to budget and road repairs to get us through another season before we can get that project done.
Once or two seasons, depends on?
Depending, depending, worst case, we need to, the suggestion is, as Mr. Batista had stated, is to give the, an IDOT-approved engineering firm, and who knows how to work with IDOT, who knows the calculations correctly, and can get us back on track. And the interim during that time, there's a lot of other grants that we can get to, through streetlight, to maybe dress that area up in that timeframe, or reset, that other engineers have presented, you know, in the past, that hey, this grant pops up, it can help you redo sidewalks. So because it is an 80/20 split on the grant with a max payout of $2 million, I'm very concerned with the delays, how much it's going to end up costing residents and the municipality to do. So during that time, since we do have to reset, we're going to try to recapture and save as much on other projects as they become available in the years. We just have to, I don't want to say start over, but based on data, it has to be recalculated.
No matter who the engineering firm is, it's going to finalize Phase One, they're going to have to trust all the information that goes into it. If that means going back to the very beginning, and I don't know how much of that is useful, but the reality is, it's going to be a situation we're going to have to have addressed, so.
They have it indicated back to the square one, but we just need to make sure the calculations are correct, to traffic counts meet the IDOT requirements. Will there be signalization? And is the lane configuration correct where we can get away with the free lane, you know, or we may have to increase the lane size, depending on the traffic count study. And we did, as a board, approve a Sam Schwartz engineer, he come in and do a traffic count study, but that doesn't, we approved a certain amount, they spent less, but it didn't meet the IDOT requirements. So we need to redo it, and we need to get it right this time.
So have we actually spent the $70,000?
Oh yeah, it's all paid.
And?
And no deliverables.
We?
I know, I know.
We gave a check to $70,000?
I know, and trust me, Gonzalez, I get it, you know, where Darryl is going in the process of implementing a holding, like a bill's payable, so like when the bill is implemented, it gets paid down to a certain amount, but the checkpoint would not allow for it to be completely paid, correct, Darryl?
That's correct, yes.
So he's going to be working on implementing that through Locust, which has never been done before here. So there's going to be better safeguards in place, but we paid out full 70, nothing more than that. Actually, we paid out more, we considered we paid short separately.
That was a separate, a separate agreement to do, but yeah, because the scope of the project had taken so long, and they submitted bills monthly pertaining to the project, it was paid out a couple thousand at a time.
So we are.
What, what do you think the total cost to do this, that you're asking for? Another 70?
Providing that the board says to move forward, we will get those cost opinions, and we will provide them for you.
Do we have options, besides moving forward?
They don't do nothing.
If we do nothing, we stay with what we have, and we give up too many, or loan, or the EP.
Well, we know we can't stay the same because of that particular area, isn't it?
Yeah, that whole thing is basically, we spent 70, I'm not sure how much of that is even useful information.
So who's overseeing the next 70? How do we know we're getting our deliverables then?
It is.
We're not going to say it's that amount, I don't know yet, I don't want to quote that. We're not spending another, I don't know what that number's going to be, we'll provide that. But there'll be a tighter oversight with a more responsible qualified engineer that can see the project through its complete process, and not have to worry.
Have we met with the existing company, we spent $70,000 with them, what was their response?
We did to get the final product, the delivered product for Egyptian Trail, and it made us have more questions than answers, which prompted myself and Mr. Batista.
In fact, you have, in fact, it is true, before it got into an adversarial we wanted the data and receive that information first. Once we received that, at that point, it was obvious to us, we need to present this to you. And at that point, it was, we needed to move forward and figure out a plan now.
So do we have a list of engineering firms, if there's one particular that comes to mind that we had already talked about? This is like an IDOT-approved engineering firm that we're going forward with, or is it something we we don't have time to go up the bid for, this kind of thing, correct?
This is usually an agreement for professional services, council, you can.
Technically, in professional services, it's a board's call, you don't have to go up the bid. So as long as that company's qualified pursuant to what we're looking for, you're fine. I would get an engagement letter to set forth the terms so the board can work.
The biggest thing that we've got to look for now is making sure that they are IDOT-approved, and frankly, based on our need to go for a variance with the county, it'd be useful to make sure whoever it is has a good rapport with the county, so there's a respected relationship of knowledge there.
And in the review they received, the engineering company, they laid out a plan on how they would do that, move forward.
The ETAs on all of these phases?
Well, 120 days on Phase One, that was two years ago.
No, I mean, just to move forward, you've been accountable for the dates that everything is due by.
And that would be provided to us, and then what they would do for us is we, some of the, not all of it is something that we would just throw away, there are some things that can be used. But they would give us a determination of a timeframe and what to do. I think we might have mentioned in the last board meeting about land acquisition, and that probably is going to be one of our longest periods, and that's about 18 months, possibly two years.
May I just say that being Rose and Bridges as a trustee prior to this, I have some information, talking with the guys, who, and DJ, and the firm that we're looking at is very, very reputable, with high esteem. They're very professional, they, they know the ins and outs without a doubt. There's no question, and they're a tracker, who proves it, and the jobs they've done. Shouldn't be, we'll talk about it, I'm sure, executive session or something, whatever we need to do with this. Some litigation going on with the company that we're down.
I can ask you openly, is there, what basis do we have for not much?
At this point in time, no, I would get the.
We get them forward regardless.
I would get the engagement letter, the board take a look at it, determine what the course of action is once you get the engagement letter, but I would probably get the engagement first and go for that.
I mean, if we spent $70,000 of the village money, and we had scope of services, and they didn't provide, and we paid them, I'm not willing to let that go.
I understand.
That's another part of the equation.
Trusted also.
We need to move ahead, but I mean, we, we're not being very good stewards at this point.
Well, I personally, I, I mentioned to you before that I'd be willing to put a sign out there and let everybody know who to thank for the delays.
I don't want to do that, I'd like to.
I know what I'm saying, but.
You know, we've spent the money, and somewhere, something
Agreed.
Doesn't quite.
It surprises me that, and I know how fussy IDOT is from Route 50, but they did account on the traffic to put the intersection in, and then add and leave, what happened to all that information? That determined how that structure should go, what type of lights and the intersection would be, they did traffic counts. I remember the wires going across the highway, and a gentleman out there in the street and everything, so. But again, knowing the state, they may want a third one for all of it.
And just to answer your question, the project, everybody had said, I thought this was supposed to go into 2013. The project was delayed to get that signal put in using the traffic counts, because it showed an increased traffic count. And then we were able to leverage a three-way split between the county, university, parking ourselves. So it ultimately saved the village a lot of money by prolonging this project of Egyptian Trail, because we had already identified that that intersection was going to need a traffic study done. We teamed up with Will County and split the cost three ways, and it worked out to the village's benefit. Providing, once that was, that work was being done, they had stormwater infrastructure the prior year, and then the rollover because of the mass arms had been delayed for a year, so they came in. We were working on our Phase One, we should have been ready as soon as those lights were done, and then we could have started on our project, that never came to fruition, and thus, we're here now, trying to stay. So those were used to help that intersection, but once.
Now we're a year or so later, so the county is almost invalid.
It doesn't, yeah, it doesn't take into account any of the shifts in traffic of people coming in and out, it just showed at that intersection, the council one. And there's additional counts that have to be taken into effect.
So it still begs the question, when we let a contract with somebody, and we have terms on there, and we get sheets every two weeks that says, here's the bills we want to pay, how do we know those bills are for services that have been verified?
And even such as a performance plan, if you will, on the engineering class. Mark, do you have any power we could?
You know, in situations like that, sometimes it's difficult, it's like in architectural building, sometimes you don't know the deficiencies until some of the work's been completed. We're running into a problem out here, another situation where either cost overruns, and we ask the architect, engineer, what happened. Unfortunately, you pay out usually on a pro rata basis. So they'll say 30% of the job is done, where's my bill? You get a bill, you pay that part, then sometimes unfortunately you find out thereafter, some of the work was deficient. Your recourse is in that letter of engagement. If services weren't provided in a professional manner, then they would rebate the money, or you would have the right to file lawsuit. But in a lot of architectural services, engineering services, some of the work is done, you pay them on a pro rata basis, unfortunately you find out thereafter the work wasn't up to standards.
And that's what happened here. In the future, as the mayor had indicated, we're setting up a provision to be able to police that a little better, as you will, and we're also working, we're also going to take the steps now to make sure that before the board is presented with an option for an engineer, or any kind of professional services, that those are qualified and have a reputation to be able to handle the scope of the project. I don't think any reputable engineering firm will want to damage their reputation. Usually after a big project is filed, and I filled out a bunch of them, for about 50 projects, you have to fill out letters to help use as a reference in the future. And it just comes with the territory, and anything that's bad per name, or affects their name, it gets posted, and it's a follow-up letter for projects, especially that are front of IDOT, or you know, different entities of such, where you rate the performance. I had to rate the performance of the contractors that did the police station, that didn't work on that. So, you know, you always get that, and you always have that possibility of, you know, them losing their name. So it'll be up to us to make sure that we give you the best information we can, and then we'll set the structure up as such, so that when the payouts are being met, as the attorney stated, we'll police it all back. The letter will indicate a timeline, and we'll just have to make sure there'll be a time.
In order to move with the project, is I'm ready, I'm trying to catch up as quick as I can with the process, there, it's very in-depth. But what I'm seeing is that there are different levels and phases of engineering, there are meetings. There are meetings with the Federal Highway Administration and the FIDOT. These are coordinated meetings that are addressing phases of the project. And with those phases, in our communication with the engineering company, which will be very close, there will be accountability, there will be updated, updated releases of where they're at that goes along with the bill.
And I guess with the board's concern, you know, what do you want to do as far as, you know, I know Heidi, you've been talking about it regarding some policies. And Darrell's actually been working on it before all this, you know. Some of those were brought to our attention before, and we're trying to address it. You know, Heidi, you did a good job of discussing it, raised everybody's attention publicly. But some of these things have been in place, but what is the board's desire when it comes to substantial payouts? Be it professional services or products typically, you payment on delivery and things of that sort. But when you get something that could be fifty thousand, seventy thousand, hundred thousand dollar project payouts, there's got to be a way to, with relevant checkpoints. We need to make sure that we're doing a better job in the agreements. And we're stipulating on the terms of the agreement. Larry, I think it's what you're indicating, that, you know, you're going to receive this, not to receive this until this part is done, not to receive this until this part is done and confirmed by I-DOT or whoever else. So we need to start making sure our agreements actually stipulate those terms. So we don't just say, oh, you know, until you get anything else, you're going to get more than thirty percent. I mean, there's got to be a way to have those checkpoints build into our agreements going forward.
And we have identified that, and we're sending the motion to the board.
Thank you very much. Just to be clear, so then we need...
I would say that if this, you know, what are you asking of us now? Permission to move forward or an action, a board action request?
Consideration to change of engineering.
What I would recommend is motion authorize Mr. Batista to obtain an engagement letter from a qualified I-DOT engineering firm pertaining to the Egyptian Trail project.
Should I anything to motion to that?
Yes, sir. I'll make that motion.
Trustee Paul?
I am.
Trustee Razor? Any discussion? Roll call.
Discussion, Austin?
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No offense to anybody in the room, but it sounds to me like we don't have on staff an engineer who's capable of determining if the results we're getting back are good results or not.
Well, we don't.
So how do we overcome that issue?
Do you want to hire one? I'm not sure what you're asking on this.
I don't want to spend money for an engineering project that we don't have anybody that can determine if we got our money's worth. We just admitted to doing that.
Yeah, let me say this, and I'll, I'll, Mr. Chris, I'll, the others as well. We are doing a better job now of making sure our staff is holding our vendors accountable. And that is part of the way we do that, through the staff we have. I don't expect us to actually be able to hire a full-time engineer, even if we're going to have somebody who is our designated engineer, if you will. They're still going to have the potential of inefficiencies. So it's on our staff to regulate and maintain those expectations. And ultimately, at this point, now that we know what we've got and who we're dealing with as far as, you know, our staff and all that sort of thing. If there's a failure to, between our finance director, between our interim administrator, between our public work superintendent, they're all going to be concerned because their job and their reputation is on the line if we perpetuate problems. And that's where they understand that. So we may not have engineers on staff, but they can realize because of these costly incidents of how important it is to have good procedures in place. And I believe, and I trust that they're going to be working towards that, even in the written document for the agreements. Go ahead.
Open to suggestions.
Didn't we have an engineer at one point within the last couple of years on staff?
Not on staff, never on staff.
No, he worked for Farnsworth, he was part of the I-50 project. Farnsworth was hired by us as a company, just like the company they're looking at right now. I'm aware of, and they are, they are very professional. They have, they have the background if you're up front company. There's no question in their ability to do the project.
Just, just so you know, much like we have four or five different law firms that represent us in one capacity or another, we also have various engineering firms of these, the departments are becoming more comfortable with, Kessel, for example, has been our structural engineer of, not that he's actually our structural engineer, but he's who we defer to, like the JTR project that went through Kessel, you know, and review of the structure and all the requirements there. So there's various engineering firms, and as they feel relevant, they're going to find the right one for the right cost factor and qualifications, things like that. And we don't necessarily have to stipulate by, that I'm aware of. You know, it's just, their reputation as a department heads on these issues is at stake. So they're going to have to make sure that these guys deliver, so.
Let's kind of follow with your question. That's the reason why we're hiring the engineering firms to be able to oversee the project. So we're trusting what they're telling us. My point in previous is that we are going to make sure that there's a better check and balance to be able to make sure that we're holding them accountable for it. As well as before, in previous administrations, there was a one-stop payout system. It was never conferred as far as project status goes, there was never a review. So it was just a one-stop payout. We're going to have guidelines where we're, departments are working together internally to be able to keep it on track and keep it going, to be able to help you. So not any one person has to be an expert in every field. That's why we're hiring for professional services. And before we bring you to the board, we're going to make sure that they're qualified to provide those professional services, or not going to waste the board's time, or our own time.
All right, we had a motion, a second. Any, just any further discussion? Roll call, please.
It's Alice.
Yes.
Ford. Beth, Paulson?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, last item on the agenda, first one on the agenda, I'm sure the kids may be. I want to address something briefly here. And this is pertaining to finances, pertaining to a lot of things. I'm endeavoring to, Darrell, I've been talking quite a bit about this. I'm endeavoring to make sure that we have good mechanisms in place, good practices. But I want, I want to make sure the board realizes that the board, the budget that you see here, I may have contributed suggestions to five or six line items, you know. But generally speaking, most of that is coming directly from the department heads in their particular areas. And as far as the, my interaction with Darrell has really been more about a matter of procedure, policy, readability, if you will, when it comes to some of these things. To make sure that it's easier to track and deal with. So like, for instance, a grant writing for twelve thousand dollars that was put in there, I didn't put that in there, but what Darrell was doing was he was breaking things out so they were no longer just bundled together in professional services, and some of the other things like that. So just so you all know, I look at this as, I'm leading with this, with what the department has recommended. But I do expect you guys to take the time necessary. You know, would we like to have a budget passed, and I think absolutely. I'd much rather make sure that each of you individually are comfortable with this. It isn't, I said it's your budget, it's our budget, you know, it's what we have to live with. And I want to make sure each of us are taking the time to dissect this as much as you feel necessary. We've got three or four new board members, myself being new as well. First time I've actually doing this this way. I know it seems a little time-consuming if you go line by line. I've never seen you do the town do it, but I'm okay with that, you know. It's whatever it takes for everybody to feel comfortable with what we have. And I do appreciate everybody's input on this. So with that being said, it is already almost quarter to nine. I don't want to be burdensome to everybody here. I do want to make sure that if you have questions, please, if you want to bring up anything you have right now. We're still working on this, but we had some other things that really needed to be addressed tonight. The finances, we've got, Larry, what you said, within the first quarter has to be passed. I know there's some concerns regarding some projects for Public Works and stuff that he's working on and stuff. Movies in the Park, different things like that, there's some things in that regard. We need to be able to move forward on some items. But I think generally speaking, if you're okay with what's like in the general fund thus far, I'm not saying we approve one portion or another, but I need to, especially with some of our programming that we're going to be doing, we need to have a little bit of latitude to allow the departments to do some basic operations. None of the all-out new expenditures and stuff like that necessarily, but just so they're operating, they're not feeling like they're kind of stagnated and can't get things done through the summer. You know, because we've got to take our time to dissect this, so. Does anybody have any, I know like, like Movies in the Park, you got to pay, what is it, a...
License.
A licensing, a copyright fee, basically. And some things that we weren't aware of in the past, we are doing now. So there's things like that that go involved in it, so. I mean, if it's okay with the board, I'd like to make sure that they're still able to continue programming some of those things. Unless somebody has any objections over what we've covered thus far. I just want to make sure that they're comfortable with, so that they're not sitting still. So anybody have any objections to that per se?
I don't think you mentioned in our conversations from last meeting that we ever objected to anything.
No, I, I... I understand that, I understand that. I just, I know that the departments sometimes feel, until there's an approved budget, they're a little gun-shy about doing anything other than just maintaining, so I just...
If there's something in particular they want, I guess we can address it specifically?
Mostly the DJ, I know you got a couple of items that were, because I want to make sure that they're benefiting from productivity from the summer hours and all that kind of stuff.
I know we've gotten through this line item, and there wasn't too much objection, it wasn't pretty good. But we're missing our window of opportunity. I've been in communication with Trustee Gonzalez, beginning part of April, I believe it was, about the tree maintenance and replacement. We've asked to increase that line item. I would really still like to be able to target some spring tree planting. And it's kind of left me in limbo because we're working without the budget as to the significance of that. We were going to allocate approximately ten thousand in the springtime, ten thousand in the fall, and leave the remaining portion for the removing of, removal of existing trees, which primarily we do in-house, but there is still stump grinding costs. When you look into the O-122, 536.
Page.
Page six in the budget. Budgeted in 2014, we budgeted twelve thousand dollars. I know we've talked about this, I'm sure, but I just want to make sure that it's kind of clear. I really would like to get this done. We're increasing this line item a little bit, being cognizant since we are having the grant writing line item to always apply for grants as they become available. In previous years past, we did not get the grants because about, roughly a hundred and thirty, a hundred and fifty municipalities put in for grants that were only available for about thirty, thirty-five municipalities. If we keep plugging away every year, possibly we'll be one of the thirty-five since we've been bypassed the last couple of years. But I'd still like to keep moving forward on tree replacement. And again, last year, we got special board approval to go past that amount. As you can see, in the spend in 2014, thirty-two, we got board approval to go ahead and spend the extra money to plant trees in the fall, and we did that. And now, based on that, I would like to double down, get spring trees planted, get fall trees planted, and start, you know, waking up the parkways. It has been the real, real bone of contention with the residents and phone calls into my office every day. And now that trees are blooming and we have dead trees on the parkways, they want to know what we're doing about it, and I would really like to be able to provide a better answer and give progress moving forward. So that really, right there is the start. We have restoration to do in those parkways from the trees that we ground, the stumps we grounded in the fall time that I would like to get to, that's, you know, dirt purchasing, that's the manpower to do it, grass seed, you know, restoration services. I can take any questions pertaining to that before I shift to the other needs that I need.
Just a quick question for Darrell, we still have about fourteen thousand deficit in the general fund?
That's correct, yes.
And I say, move along, let's...
What does that mean?
Well, on this particular one, I don't see an issue here.
So you're saying ten thousand in spring, ten thousand in fall? So you're wanting no authorization, at least deal with the ten thousand now?
I want to be able to, I want to have the authorization to start on the tree program, budget it off of what we're having right now. This way I can set up, you know, remediation, replanting, get these, you know, I've already got quotes in. I know what we'll spend, I can budget it and split it, and I just want to have that, knowing that that's in that line item and that I'm okay, I want to get to that.
Specifically, 536, correct?
I'm sorry, yes, exactly.
I don't have an issue, I agree, this is spring.
Trustee Gonzalez, I know this is a personal passion for you, are you okay with this?
And DJ and I talked about it too, and I appreciate it, we ain't putting that much thought into it.
Right. He puts a lock on it, and do a lot of things, I don't know, it's all the thought stations.
Just, if I may ask just one quick question, almost quick. When you remove the stump, how deep do you go down?
The stump grinder usually does that with the machine, and we've seen him in different situations where he's been six, eight inches down enough to kill the stump. And then it'll eventually rot. It's going to be one of those things where we'll probably get sagging parkways after the years as the wood rots. It depends on the volume of the tree, yeah, you know, the smaller trees.
It's advised not in the same location.
We can't put them in the same location, it was advised not to do it in the same location. So with, with the limited funds that the municipality has, I've taken a methodical approach to, if a parkway in front of a house had two trees, we're giving them one in the center so we can kind of spread the wealth to get the trees put back in. You know, when builders were building the houses, when things were done, things were more plentiful and ash trees were, you know, plenty, and we're trying to not inundate the village with the same concrete, so.
So can I get an approval to accept the one item, just so he has something to work with on? Is there one specific item?
Just a consensus?
I don't... Just to prove that one line item?
Well, I think consensus.
Consensus, all right. I, I, he just has to have a, you know, comfort with going forward. I've got two over here.
The next line item?
Can I go back to that one? No, not in here. The consensus over here on the 536?
Yeah.
All right. Next one, sir?
Street maintenance, old page ten, O-200528. There's not much in this line item, we're keeping it the same. But as you know, we have had main breaks in the roads. I would like to get, now that the plant is open back up, get the bids out so that I can get some of the main break locations repaired so that we're not driving on stone over those road locations. That's part of the springtime restoration projects that I try to hold over whenever we have that. That's very, very low budget, and it's only for maintenance when we do that kind of stuff. It's also part of a, of a, you know, process that we use when it comes under the water, you know, because it's an effect of a water. And we've never stipulated because the water main broke, why does the road bridge have to fix it? You know, I can split the hair on that all day long, but since the road bridge is our weakest fund. But it's part of, we have to restore the roads where the main breaks have broke. I just want to make sure that, I haven't increased it, it's worked thus far. And I want to just make sure that I can proceed with doing the street repairs that I need to do in the O-2 account, so that we can move on from the main breaks and everything. in the 02 account, so that we can move on from the main breaks and everything. Okay, very good.
Mike, your question would be, you've increased this in your request from 12,000, 512 to 35,000?
I have not actually, budgeted in 2014 was 3,500, or 35,000, and budgeted in '15 was the same, 35,000.
And you just spent?
And we spent 12, 5, 13, 6 projected in that, but we did not do any street maintenance replacements last year. So I always do fat because you never know what's going to happen underground.
What was the reason you didn't do it last year?
Because of projects in the road and trying to formulate a plan as to the severity of the road projects. I did have a project presented at the administration level to fix Court Street. It never got brought to the board. I, I, I can't, you know, I can only bring it though so far, and if it doesn't go any farther, you know.
What, the line above that, ditch maintenance, is that going to be affected if you start working on the streets? Are you going to have to do that too?
Ditch maintenance, ditch maintenance is, is more for the unfinished roads. That will be affected this year, we have a lot of ditch maintenance. As people have driven past them down Court Street, they see a barricade that's slowly sinking into the ground. There is an open storm sewer that broke over the winter time. Again, the severity of the winter has cracked some of the pipes, that's something different altogether. Ditch maintenance will be done, but if you want to approve that, fine, I can get that fixed if you want.
No, if you're asking for street maintenance, do you have to do, do they go together is the question?
Not necessarily. The street maintenance I'm looking for right now is just to maintain the street, fix the patches by the.
Approximately how much?
I'm sorry?
Approximately how much of the 35,000 are you looking for right now?
Just to proceed with doing the work that I need to do to fix the roads. I'm not going to fix anything that doesn't.
Do you have a dollar amount?
Not totally yet, no, it has to be marked out. I haven't gotten those bids yet for those projects, I'm waiting until the budget passed. Usually when you approve the budget, you're okay to spend the funds, and then I do my due diligence to save as much.
Broke 35,000 last year, you didn't spend it, that's why I'm asking, are you talking about 15,000 right now, or?
Again, yeah, for, if, if 15,000 pacifies the question, yes. I can't be held accountable for what the board didn't, it didn't approve when I presented it at the time, but we would have spent.
So you didn't present something to the board that we didn't approve?
It would have been presented to the board had it gone further after presentation. I can bring it so far, and if it doesn't get to the board or get put on the agenda, there's only so much I can do. We know about the road deficiencies that we had around town, we did minor repairs to them because of that.
So that being said, in this, you know, as you're planning through the projects that you have on there, like Egyptian Trail, you could, you know, because we're going to be a year, year and a half, or we start?
It will be more if we do that, it'll be, it'll be, board will have to authorize to, to do that using, I would guess MFT phones if that's not correct, so. And that will be a separate issue that will not affect the line item itself. We will, we will bring that up at a later date, and that will be based off of, of the engineering that we get back from that project. So this doesn't, you know, although I do buy cold patch out of this for street maintenance to fix engineer, to fix that road and pave it and so on and so forth. We have roads right now that we've used our surplus up that I got over the winter time, I need to fix it, you know. If I get a semi-load of cold patch to keep us going, that's roughly $3,500. And if I start getting sections done, which are contracted out, because we do not have the equipment paying prevailing wage, that can run into the thousands. And if I try to group the projects like I usually do to save, since the crews have mobilized already on scene, get this, this, this done, you know, is 15,000 a safe bet? Sure, I mean, did I spend that last year? No, so save 15, you know, is, is a, is a good safe bet. And knowing that we have other projects that will have to be taken care of. Court Street has opened up, anybody that drives into, and I'm getting a lot of phone calls about this, into the Highlands area. Court Street opened up right in the middle, probably about three houses down, traveling westbound, just past Egyptian Trail, that was not there last year. When you go to the end and poke at the stop sign, the, the upper pavement portion of it is skidded. As cars hit the brakes and stop at the stop sign, that's failing. So I'm not going to do those projects right now, but if a hole needs to be cut out and a binder needs to be fixed, I'll try to schedule that in right away, but I'm trying to, to save the money as much as I can.
We're projecting to be $287,000 deficit in this account. I would suggest for the time being that we authorize 20,000.
That's fine, thank you.
That's just my suggestion, I'm only one person.
So, and I, and I.
That came from actually.
And then, Darryl?
Yeah.
Just, just sort of follow Darryl, go and address that issue if you could.
In this particular fund, the 287 deficit, it's actually more there. In previous, in the previous year, there was a, if you see at the top of the revenue section, I have a kind of shaded line. And it looked like there was projected to be a bond issue, and it was anticipated that about, that amount would come in through a bond issue. So what I did in the revenue, revenue side is I, I just plugged it back in because that's what I'm certain at this point. Without that bond issue or any other type of law, then basically you're, you're looking at a bigger deficit there.
As you know, road bridge is the weakest.
I'm sorry, hold on, I, I apologize.
Okay, sorry.
I heard 20, is there a consensus on that? Just as a carryover until we get the budget approved this month. Next.
That'll keep me going for a while. Again, the park issue, as the mayor had brought up, summertime park events are going to be starting up really soon as school lets out in June. Ruben and I have designed some park programs that we would like to move forward with. And it starts in the early planning, getting the events on our website, getting the signs made, getting everything in place that needs to be done.
Page nine, by the way?
I'm sorry?
Page nine?
Page nine.
Do you want mine out for this?
Zero, page nine, 017937, program expenses. Ruben put this line item together based off input that we've compiled together. And he's got some revisions that we need to address on that that didn't make it onto the budget.
In that line item, we also pay our instructors, our, our fitness instructors, our karate, taekwondo, self-defense. Instructors are paid out of that fund as, as Superintendent Griselle mentioned. Then we also want to launch some new programs this summer on his movies in the park. I believe there's, correct me if I'm wrong, seven dates, I, I believe, with movies for adults and the movies for the kids. We also want to do music in the park. This will be new program, and we're looking at probably three events over the summer. One event per, per month. In the summer, it costs there about 500 for each event. And that would be for a few bands that would play on a particular weekend here at the, in, in the park, at the cribery stage. And so with that, we're, we're asking for, so we would have our movies, we would have our instructors, and we're asking for at least 97, 20, so to be moved up from, I believe, it indicated 2990, 02. Just going back historically, just over, just paying my instructors for the past year, we were at about 55, 20. So that was, that line item was in error. 97, 20.
97, 20.
And that should go, if we can make it even 10,000, even better.
So you put.
But I would lead, I mean, that's just with, that's right at paying out what we would need to do. That's our movie rights, which is about $2,000, we've estimated for all of our movies. That's for our movie itself, our music, our fitness programs, to launch the programs, and then for instructor, our instructor payroll as well.
So does that also include the cost, I'm looking concession expenses is?
It's a separate line item.
Yeah, I know, but there's actually nothing there. So you're potentially going to have concession income and concession expenses, neither one of them are identified in there. And would the cost of the health permit, the annual permit or whatever like that, would that be part of that expense for concessions or programs?
They would also be part of our programs as well.
And what about line item, just above that, 9011 for events?
That, the majority of that, I believe, was for our Fall Fest, and for Kids' Day as well.
So, I don't know, I'm sorry if I missed that, it, it broken out, because I know we had fees that we had to pay for, you know, the bands and things, and then, so that would be an expense, and then.
Our rentals and our, there's infrastructure rentals to our entertainment.
So, so for right now, so, so I'm just sorry for this right now, because we need to review that area more, more correctly. I guess would be the best way to describe it, but for the time being, what you're asking for is just a general consensus of about roughly $10,000 for the summer programs. Is that something we feel comfortable with?
Are we charging fees for some of these though, that, that are instructor-led, so that we recoup the?
We are, we are.
Yes, there is, there is a fee.
So there's an offset to some of this?
Yeah, and we're going to need to make sure, because here's, here's the thing too, a lot of these, this is all new this last year. So we really, in this particular department, which is kind of a whole new development that's taking place, we're expanding our services to the community. We need to make sure that like the 50,000 under events, as an example, Darryl, we need to make sure that that 50,000 under the events also takes into account not just the net expense, but the, the cost of everything, I think last year it ended up being around 75,000 or something like that that was the event related. I know you're talking about doing the, the vendors differently at Safe Off Fest, where you're not going to be dispersing money because you're not going to be receiving money, they're going to collect it themselves. There's going to be an upfront income, but you're going to make sure all that's stipulated right here.
Yeah, so I was wondering if we can expand events a little bit more for both revenue and expenses?
Sure, yeah. Because if we get sponsorships and things of that sort, it's all going to add up, because I know last year we had, just for Fall Fest, I think we have, how do you remember, 30,000 about?
Is this something we can get the new Parks and Recreation Director to detail for us?
I think so, I think so, I think so. But Darryl's, Darryl's got to review the actual numbers, because last year it ended up being more of a summary of net difference, not necessarily, if you, if you look.
Total expense.
But we need to make sure we get both, or else our budget will be out. Go ahead, Mr. Winters.
No, we're just mentioning above that in the revenue, there are the programs and the sponsor fees, so it's showing what, what has come in to offset what's being spent down.
Sure.
So you've got to oversee that, but we, you are correct, we do need to break that one.
Yeah, I don't think this is, this particular part of the general budget is in question right now, so I don't have a problem with you staying within the budget and spending it, because again, you're going to have offsetting revenue in most cases. And you do have a budget, this is not where we're going to be talking, I don't think we'll be talking about money in this area.
But the general cost of the program area, so that he can anticipate, so he knows he has some working latitude?
It's in the budget.
Well, but the, the amount there was incorrect initially, the 29 versus 10,000 or whatever. So is it okay to give us latitude for the summer programs and the summer music and movies and all that? So they had some latitude of about $10,000. And I believe DJ, you're actually talking to a couple people as well about some potential sponsor?
I've been reaching out since I took over the Kids' Movies in the Park, I'm sure I've. I'll recoup, I've already got a sponsor that pays for the platform, and we hand out free, and, you know, I have leads in for other ones who might help fund the actual program.
Sure.
Since we, the steering panel was able to vote yes on the new visual equipment and sound equipment for hosting Movies in the Park and, and Movies in the Park. We've also, Ruben and I have discussed in saving money for Kids' Day instead of spending $5,000 on fireworks, possibly hosting a movie at the end of that for the kids, which will save the municipality a bunch of money. So, you know, initially I was going to do, you know, X number of dates, we increased that to try to help save money instead of blowing fireworks at Kids' Day, showing a movie, maybe that will be well-received, but we have, you know. I got a phone call from a lady today that I, I forwarded to Ruben's voicemail that wanted to know if we were having fireworks here in July. So I'm not saying, you know, we shouldn't do it, but I'm trying to save the village money, and if I can give them a movie that the kids can wind down the sugar high on and settle down before they go home, I'm willing to do whatever I can, so.
Sure. And, and, and I do want to make sure everybody understands that DJ and his wife have both done a phenomenal job of taking the reins on the kids' portion of it, and Trusty Horn and his wife have done the adults' side of that. And it's, it's, you know, it's good to see what people are. Yeah, the, there's.
No, no more class.
Techno color. So, alright.
I'm all in favor of spending more money on Parks and Recreation, but I'm not in favor of increasing the deficit.
I agree.
So we have to take this out of something else? If we're going to spend, we're going to add 7,000 here, we should be taking it out of something else.
I understand. But we're also looking for revenue sources for that as well.
Then add the revenue, you'll put more revenue in there, fine, we'll hold you to it.
We'll, we'll just need to confirm that.
You'll hold us to the projected revenue?
I'm going to hold you to the projected expenses, I'm going to hold you to the projected revenue.
Exactly. So gentlemen, is there anything else that was pending that you needed to address?
Those are the main topics to keep us moving forward, other than paying the bills on time.
And then, and I know we're working on a process, Darryl is getting finance related, Darryl is working on a, a system that can be implemented, we've researched other towns, found out most of them have implemented it by internal administrative policy, I think is what most of the towns have done, I know. We've talked to a few other towns, Russian Park is one of them, I think Trusty Gonzalez brought some information for. Talked to the mayor there and their finance person, and they didn't actually pass an ordinance per se, but it was just more of an internal administrative policy. So what Darryl's going to do is, Trusty Horn has been dealing with the, as a finance norm as well. So Darryl's going to review those with the auditor, treasurer, et cetera, et cetera, and going to have something presented to us at some point in the near future. In the interim, any checks that need to get paid prior to the AP warrant list summary, if there are any utilities or things like that, expect a call on a Thursday afternoon from Deputy Court. And she will very likely identify what they are and get more consensus, and it's okay to proceed with that. As long as you use a vote of at least four affirmatives, then this end is okay.
You know, I hate to be rude, or coarse, or crude, but I don't think there's an issue here with paying the utility bills or the water bills.
No, I understand that.
The issue is when we pay $70,000 to an engineering firm that we shouldn't have paid. Or $20,000 to a internet service or whatever, but normal bills like that, I don't think are an issue. And I don't, to me, that's wasting a lot of people's time. Nobody asked you to do that.
Well.
And the standard order of business, you, you need a policy understood. But the standard order of business, the normal bills that are being paid on a regular basis for services provided, I don't think have been questioned by any trustee. Trustees have questioned the other bills that are a little out of the ordinary for services that haven't been provided.
I understand.
But if you want to call me on Thursday afternoon, go after it, run me down.
So, for the time being, until Finance Director Bullner provides you with an idea of what we're going to be doing, just to make sure that there's no misunderstandings or misgivings regarding it, we will fairly contact you if there's any checks that need to be issued in the interim. I understand, respectfully, I acknowledge what you're saying, but we want to make sure that there is no misunderstanding about why was that check issued or not issued or whatever else. I just assume, unless the board says no, that's fine, and the trustee can move in the right direction, deal with it accordingly, and then we'll have a policy in place with that. Darryl, what's the next?
Mr. Mayor, it's 9:10 Wednesday night, you're telling me that you can't tell me what bills need to be paid tomorrow?
Personally, I can't.
So walk up here and tell us, and we'll say okay. You don't, or you call us tomorrow, whichever way you want.
I'm talking about in the off weeks, when we're not having a board meeting. I'm just saying, so if you have an off week where there's not, something needs to get paid in an off week, I just wanna make sure that we're honoring the expectations to communicate anything pertaining to a prepayment prior to being on the AP warrant list. Any checks prior to the AP warrant list being approved by the board. I'm merely identifying. I wanna honor the expectations that I've understood. If I've understood them correctly, I get it, but we are developing a policy internally that's gonna be reviewed by the treasurer, the auditor, et cetera. But in the, in the interim, if we have an off week, which, you know, that does happen occasionally. You know, we have sometimes we have five weeks in a month and we'll have to meet. So I just wanna make sure there is a procedure in place, so.
Do you have, do you have an interim recommendation or do any of the trustees have another recommendation? I just hate to see the clerk wasting time calling trustees to write a check for the post office. That's an awful waste of time.
It's fine. I, I don't.
Well, there's gotta be something that makes sense, what makes sense. We're all reasonable adults.
Mr. Bolner, by the next week maybe we'll have a, a list of recommendations for that and may not have to be bothered by another phone call because we have another board meeting next week, so.
You're not bothering me. It's not, I'm not worried about you calling me. I'm worried about a clerk who has other things to do.
I understand. So we'll have something results. So, thank you very much. Quarter after nine, unless the board has a specific question pertaining to another item, I would merely recommend that we defer this for another meeting pertaining to finance.
Can I just get one, there's one big one on here that I just wanna ask about and DJ for you. And this might come up in line five thirty-two, bridge maintenance?
Bridge maintenance, yes. That is there in the event that we have a, a failure. Strand has provided for the last ten years inspection reports to the bridge and I've just been in contact with Strand to possibly provide the reinspection of that bridge based on those results.
Page ten.
Page ten, O two, oh, oh, five, three, nine, right?
Five, three, two.
Five, three, two, I'm sorry. That pertains to bridge maintenance and it's just a, a worst-case scenario based off of some estimates since the village owns two bridges in town.
So?
We, we, you, you, obviously that's not enough money to build a bridge or replace a bridge if it falls down, but it would help. But it's always been used as a baseline for bridge maintenance in years past. You can see we have not spent it, but the bridge has shifted and we need to have structural integrity. As you know, bridges in Illinois, United States are a hot topic with everybody to have inspections done. I, I still want to maintain the bridge program so that we can inspect them once a year and based off of the results and the recommendations on engineers, that's where those funds will be displaced to.
My only question was, I know it's a good cushion. Frankly, is it enough or is this something, you know, maybe based on those inspections to move some of this line item to some of the other places you might need it?
It, it could be very well. It, it could be very well. Because anything that's gonna be a major will have to go to the board and will have to be designed. It's just always what was programmed into it and from my understanding and talking with the engineers, because we have two bridges, keep in mind we're splitting that cost between two bridges. So it's a good, it's a good idea to keep, from what I've been told, about a hundred and fifty in each in case there is a structural integrity issue or a problem that has to be addressed.
But this could literally, um, mark a period of pay pause for this?
Because, because of that being in the road and bridge fund, we would have to figure out how to, how to pay for these bridges. For sure. It's, it's one of those contingencies that this village has with the luxury of not having trains blowing their horn through the intersections, you know. We have a very quiet neighborhood and those two bridges keep our sanity with the residents that live close to them, so.
Same thing holds true then on the street construction on eight thirty-seven? Sorry, same page?
Uh, street construction is used as the same guideline depending on a street that we do for any kind of construction. It's always been a good baseline to have for potential streets that we may have to deal with. The debt proceeds, three ninety was put in there because at the time we were talking about bonds, it was gonna cost us about one point five million to redo Eagle Fair, Ridge and South of Bronns. So obviously it would've offset a lot of those costs and street constructions showed that in that line item at one point two, we briefly touched on bonds, we have to reassess our roads. That number may fluctuate or change in dealing with finance to try to figure out how we're gonna do that in the future, to develop that in the future. Those two numbers may disappear. I'm not exactly sure. I let finance tell me. We know that if we get the revenue in from a bond and at that time it was projected at one point five, if the board decides they wanna go more or less, that number will be offset by the bond payment. So it's in there because of that and keep in mind that we're gonna owe twenty percent of whatever street construction, Egyptian Trail happens. So we have to keep money in there for that too. Not that it may happen during this fiscal budget, but we have to plan for in the off chance that we can start getting some of those funds taken care of during the twenty-fourteen, fifteenth fiscal budget.
With that, I think, when would you like to have the next meeting to, to review items on the finance budget itself? I don't wanna cloud up our actual regular board meeting next week with that, if we can avoid that so we can just do a regular business next week. Following week, I will be out of town, the clerk will be out of town, but that does mean you can't have the meeting with us. Okay. She'll be exhumated and I wouldn't have to be here or something like, what did you say? So it's entirely up to you. Do you wanna go ahead and plan on a meeting pertaining to reviewing the budget the week of the twenty-first? Would that be correct?
If we do, then you won't be available. Deputy clerk will step in for the?
That's fine.
Major and staff will be available.
Yeah, that's fine.
He'll be on vacation on Tuesday.
Oh, Darrell won't be here, forget it.
That's twenty-third.
Yeah, if Darrell's not here, forget it. I might come in.
It'd go away.
He got his summer wheels put on his car. He's gonna go out and cruise for a while. Okay, so.
Let's discuss it next week.
That'll be fine. That's fine. I'll undertake a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'm sorry.
No, it's not actually. It's a special one since I wanna be here and just let everybody know, we did get permission from Dunkin' Donuts to be on the roof. That took a little bit of corporate wrangling to get that done. So we're gonna be up there. We're gonna have the coffee cups, travel mugs, ten dollar donation. You'll get a travel mug, a free cup of coffee. So in my absence, Sergeant Rick will be here next week. He'll be able to answer some questions, but I wanted to let everybody know that that is the thirtieth and.
May thirtieth?
May thirtieth and we're shooting for a low estimate of twelve hundred dollars in donations. And since we have a hundred and eight cups to sell, we need to do a little better. May thirtieth. Five AM till eleven AM. I believe it's Friday.
Five AM till one, eleven AM?
Eleven AM. Thank you very much.
Yeah, so can we make sure? Did I hear first? I didn't, I didn't hear the motion. Motion, uh, raise it, second, Warren, will publish. Thank you all very much.